Good morning and welcome to the June 23 city council meeting. Once again, we are in the Columbus Civic Center as we continue to socially distance ourselves and make sure that the public has access to their elected officials in as safe a manner as possible. We're going to begin, as we always do, with a prayer, and I'd like to call on Councilor Valerie Thompson to please invoke God's blessings for us.
Thank you. Let us pray. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Father God, we thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health that we have, Father God, that we need to fulfill our calling. Therefore, God, I pray for our mayor and our city manager. Father, we pray for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I am asking that you will graciously grant us wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time. God, give us a sense of wellness and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Father God, I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work and around our beloved city that we call Columbus, Georgia. Father God, we thank you on this day in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Councilor Thompson. If you would, please stand at your feet and join me in a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll be glad when we get some cute kids in here to do that again. Next up, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Minutes are received. Just a couple of real quick things. Well, first of all, I want to bring up Ms. Susan Gallagher with New Horizons. She had done an outstanding presentation on some of the challenges with the mental health of the community.
Mr. Mayor, I did just want to announce that Councilor Woodson is present with us virtually.
I forgot again. Thank you. Good morning, Councilor Woodson. Glad you are with us. But we've wanted to give Ms. Gallagher a few more minutes instead of just the five that was allotted in the public agenda, so Ms. Gallagher?
Hi, am I? Oh, okay, great. Good morning. Thank you. And once again, I brought with me Ms. Andrea Winston, the CEO of New Horizons Behavioral Health, and Dr. Clyde, Executive Director of Tree of Life, is here with me this morning. Thank you again for this opportunity. Mental health is part of our overall health and wellness, and I wanted to reiterate during this time of the COVID pandemic, when people are experiencing heightened levels of stress, fear, and anxiety, that it's important to know the signs and symptoms of mental illness, to know what the resources are locally, nationally, and regionally, and also to inform you as local policymakers around the impact you can have locally on mental health. Mental health is health and wellness. There is no health without mental health. And during this time of the COVID pandemic, there is a need for integrated health care. Over the past three years, there has been a steady decline in the life expectancy of Americans. This is the longest life expectancy decline since 1915 through 1918, when we were fighting in World War I and when we had the Spanish pandemic. So for three years, our life expectancy as Americans has gone down. Public health officials attribute this to a rise in what we call the diseases of despair, a rise in drug overdoses, an increase in liver disease, including livers that are affected by abuse of alcohol and other drugs, as well as hepatitis C, and a rise in suicide rates. These are the diseases of despair, and these are going to be perpetuated by the stress and anxiety that we're living through this COVID pandemic. And not just the COVID pandemic itself, but the economic stress and uncertainty that it's causing for many of our family, friends, and fellow citizens. The COVID pandemic, can I?
I'm working it.
Okay. The COVID pandemic has probably affected over 114,000 Americans with loss of life since we started tracking the disease in February, so it's had a severe impact on us. It's devastating to our country and community. Look at how it's impacted just the way we meet as officials and policymakers and citizens. We're having to sit six feet apart and wear masks, so the impact on our lives is really tremendous. And we need to prepare our health system, which includes our mental health system, for the possibility of a rising tide of illness and death from these diseases of despair that I mentioned earlier, which are already taking a toll on our lives. Although the exact number is currently unknown for people that are facing anxiety as a result of fear, social distancing, et cetera, we can ascertain that it's impacting more people than the virus itself. All of our children are out of school. All of us had to shut down. All of us are wearing masks and social distancing. As the economy continues its descent into recession, many more people will experience the symptoms of mental illness that come with that despair, of not being able to work, not being able to pay your bills, the housing instability and the ripple effects that that cause. As the stimulus payments end and many people and businesses don't rebound, we may see more people suffering these consequences. And last time I spoke to you, I talked about the ripple effect that these consequences have: family dysfunction, child abuse, domestic violence, involvement with the juvenile justice system, involvement with the criminal justice system, the economic instability of not being able to hold a job because of anxiety or depression, or possibly substance abuse brought on by stress and anxiety, and also the housing instability that can go along with it. So it not only impacts our physical health, but it affects the health of our communities also. When we think of some of these things that are considered social ills, they may have their roots in untreated mental illness or addictive disease. Some individuals during this time of stress and anxiety may turn to unhealthy coping mechanisms, such as alcohol or abuse. They may abuse prescription drugs. They may do a combination of prescription drugs and alcohol. And some individuals that have been in recovery may relapse, putting them at higher risk for overdose death. It's well-known in the substance abuse addiction community that individuals that have been in recovery for a long time, when they do relapse, they are at higher risk for death from overdose. Now, more than ever, we need to understand that mental health is part of our overall health and well-being. As I said earlier, there is no health without mental health. Integrated health care is the approach to whole-person health, where we look at not just the physical health, but our mental health and well-being and substance abuse treatment, all in one location, because we're one body, we're one integrated system working together, and we need to be treated that way by our health care community also. Mental health also has an impact on the quality of life for Americans. A recent study indicated that four of the top 10 health conditions that affect quality of life are related to mental health. So it ties into everything: major depressive disorder, substance abuse, alcohol abuse, psychotic disorders. Those all have a major impact on quality of life, not as longevity, as I mentioned earlier. And the top 10 causes of death for Americans include number three, accidental deaths, which includes those overdose deaths, which are considered accidental, and number 10, which is suicide for adults. I've talked to you before about suicide for children in the state of Georgia. Suicide is number two for childhood deaths in Georgia for children ages 10 to 17. Suicide is number two. I want you all to kind of wrap your minds around that. So our kids are in crisis also, not just our adults. Integrated health care is a team approach to your well-being. It looks at your primary care physician, your psychiatrist, your counselor, your nurse, your pharmacist, all working together to maintain your overall vital health and well-being. And just as if you would see your primary care physician and he's giving you medication for diabetes, there are things you have to do in conjunction with that medication, things we probably don't like to do, like diet and exercise, but you can't rely on the medication alone. Just as when you go to your primary care physician, he may give you medication to help with anxiety or depression, but it's important to also see somebody, a counselor, a therapist, to work on those things that you need to do to control the depression and anxiety, some of those things that a therapist can help you work through. So I'm asking you to fully integrate mental health into your personal wellness, and that's three major steps that I'm asking you to do: know the signs and symptoms, reduce the stigma around mental health and addictive disease, and decrease barriers to treatment. We all know the signs and the symptoms of heart attack or stroke. If you're watching a movie and you see somebody grab their arm, you know, oh, heart attack. Or if somebody starts experiencing paralysis on one side of their face, you know, oh, stroke. We need to know those signs and symptoms around mental health, around anxiety, depression, et cetera. New Horizons Behavioral Health has partnered with DBHDD, that's the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, to bring free mental health awareness trainings to our community. These trainings are now being offered virtually through November, and they include youth mental health first aid, mental health first aid, and QPR, which is Question, Persuade, and Refer, a 90-minute class that teaches you the signs and symptoms of suicide awareness and helps us combat this number 10 leading cause of death for adults in the United States. You can invite a speaker to a group, your faith, work, church, to talk about mental health. You can call me anytime. I love talking. I'd be glad to come and talk about the issues. And attend a support group meeting. NAMI Columbus is a very active group, and they work with families around mental health when somebody's diagnosed and can help them through the system, because sometimes it can be complicated. So let's do a little COVID mental health check-in. Anxiety is a normal response to a stressful situation. If you didn't feel anxious with all this going on, I would kind of wonder what's going on with you, because it is a reason to feel anxious. But while this anxiety can be prolonged, it can take an impact on our body, and some of us have been dealing with this anxiety and stress since February, March, around COVID. And it doesn't look like it's going away anytime soon, so we're going to have prolonged anxiety that we're dealing with. Most people feel sad or depressed in times. Again, it's a normal reaction to life's loss and struggle, but when you start having prolonged feelings of self-worthlessness, hopelessness, for maybe days or weeks, it may be more than sadness, it may be clinical depression. And both anxiety and depression are treatable medical conditions. I want to get that across to you there: treatable medical conditions. Some of the signs and symptoms for anxiety and depression overlap. One of the most common ones would be sleep disruption, depression. You may find yourself sleeping more, not wanting to wake up in the morning. Anxiety, you may find that you can get to sleep, but you can only sleep for a couple of hours at a time. So excessive sleep, disrupted sleep, these are signs of, common signs of anxiety and depression. Depression, you could again have those extreme feelings of sadness, maybe crying for no time. With anxiety, you may be extremely fearful. Somebody who might not want to go to the grocery store because of fear of COVID is experiencing higher levels of anxiety and stress. So again, it's important to know the signs and symptoms and that these are treatable medical conditions. Now, children may have a different response to trauma, and when you think of what's going on with COVID pandemic, it is trauma that our children are experiencing. You can go to the next slide. So most people think of trauma as maybe physical abuse or seeing something awful, but a house fire, the pandemic that we're experiencing, these are forms of trauma. Our children have been pulled out of school, are now dealing with online classes in some instances, they're having their social network taken away from them, so they're experiencing a form of trauma themselves. You may notice different signs and symptoms in children as related to trauma. So a younger child maybe is crying more or has reverted in some behaviors that they have progressed through. Maybe children have started bedwetting again, or thumb sucking, or children, or smaller children are becoming excessive clingy. These are signs that the child has experienced some type of trauma. Our older teens and middle schoolers, teens and tweens, they're going to display signs of trauma in different ways. They may pull back, social isolating, they may not find joy in the things that they used to find. So it's important as family members, parents, caregivers, that we know the signs and symptoms in our children also, and can get them to talk about the feelings that they're going through, and maybe talk to your pediatrician, primary care physician about what they're happening. The second thing around mental health that I wanted you to do was to reduce the stigma around mental health and addictive disease. I've been talking over a year now about conversations of courage, because sometimes it does take courage to talk about our mental health or our family members' mental health. But we need to have the conversation, we need to normalize the conversation, and we need to welcome the conversation. I don't want to reveal my age, but I'm a child of the 60s, and I remember people talking in hushed tones when somebody had a diagnosis of cancer. Sometimes they wouldn't even say cancer, they'd just say the C-word. So the advocates around cancer have done a great job in normalizing the conversation. We talk now about our treatments. People are happy to ring the bell, and it's on Facebook, and we've made so much progress in the treatment around cancer. We need to do the same thing around mental health. We need to normalize the conversation, have the conversation, and welcome the conversation. And the last thing I'm asking folks to do is decrease the barriers to mental health services, and this is where you, as policymakers, come into play: access and availability to services, cost and transportation. Integrated health care, that mind, body, and soul, physical health, mental health, and addictive disease treatment works. It is an effective treatment for the overall wellness of an individual, but we need to reduce the barriers so that individuals can receive treatment. New Horizons has partnered with Tree of Life, and between the two agencies, we treat over 1,500 individuals, whole individuals, their mental health and their physical health, which is very important during this time of COVID. Our partnership is strong and thriving, and we want to let you know that integrated health care is the answer for overall health and well-being, especially in this time when our mental health is going to be challenged for the next few months or so, maybe longer. I don't have a crystal ball. Our integrated health care is addressing both physical and mental health needs from COVID-19 simultaneously and seamlessly, but we need your support. New Horizons Behavioral Health is part of the state mental health safety net, and like all state agencies, we've been asked to decrease our budget by 11%. It's across all departments, and it's looming, so most certainly, we're going to see an impact on the availability of local mental health services and addictive disease treatment. But it's up to us to provide the support to our family, friends, neighbors, coworkers, citizens who might be suffering or living with a mental illness as the next most imminent public health crisis approaches us like a tidal wave. There are state, local, and national resources available. We do have the emotional support line that the state of Georgia operates. It's available from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. for somebody that may just want to talk during this time of social anxiety, social distancing. There's also the Georgia Crisis and Access Line if somebody is in a mental health or addiction crisis. You can call the Georgia Crisis Access Line 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. The crisis line is staffed by mental health professionals. The SAMPSA Suicide Prevention Line is available. There's also the Veterans Crisis Line, because sometimes our veterans have different needs than the general population. You know, individuals that have been to war, that have that military mindset, have different needs and may feel more comfortable speaking to somebody that has a military background. There's also 211, the United Way. Our local chapter has a very generous amount of resources available to individuals, and a lot of our teens don't like to talk to somebody on their phone. There is a crisis text line that they can use, so they can just text to the crisis line 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And New Horizons is always here to help, too. 706-596-5500 is our appointment line, and that is available Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We are your safety net provider of core behavioral health services to children, teen, adults, and families. Mental health has that ripple effect. It not only affects your physical health and well-being, it can affect the health and well-being of our community. We are here to serve you, Muskogee County and the surrounding Chattahoochee County areas. So, thank you, sir.
No, thank you, Ms. County. Ms. Winston?
Yes, sir. We want to thank you, Mayor, for having us. These sort of events and productions also help to reduce stigma. One in five of us here in this room will suffer at some point in time from some sort of mental illness, so we want to thank you for your allowing us to have a conversation of courage around mental health.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Clyde, did you have anything?
Yes, again, thank you all for allowing us to be here today, and it is extremely important that we understand the integrated health care is really working, and it's important. We're exchanging patients already, and so the model is good. And again, thank you for what you all do in our city, and thank you, Mayor, for putting us on your agenda to bring attention to this issue.
Thanks, sir. Susan, thank you. And actually, I invited them to be kind of my COVID update, because this pandemic has been going on a long time, and people are confused, they're frustrated, they're scared, they're becoming kind of committed to not following the guidelines because of their frustration. And I think it's important for them to understand it's okay to feel the way they do, but they still have to continue to try to help us contain the spread of this virus. We're up to 1,213 positive cases in Columbus. We've lost 34 residents in Muskogee County to this virus. And we're hearing people clamoring for access to more facilities, and then we hear of an individual at another facility that that whole area is having a quarantine because they've had two people come down with the virus. So we are, as Ms. Gallagher pointed out, we're not through this thing. We need everybody to pitch in and do their part and to monitor their distance, do the social distancing. If you are in an environment where you cannot, wear a mask.
Yep.
Thank you all so much for what you do for the citizens of this area.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Pops, Councilor Ballard.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank you for really thinking forward. Many here in the community, all the other communities, are cognizant of the physical effects of COVID, not realizing the myriad emotional pressures and stresses. And so just allowing them to come, to let them know it's normal to feel those things. A lot of people, they don't know how to react. They don't know what anxiety, the different forms of anxiety and depression. So allowing them to come and to let everyone know it's normal, it's a normal expression, and there's many helps that they can seek in the communities. I would just want to thank you for allowing them to address it so that individuals can understand what they are feeling, so I appreciate that so much.
Thank you, sir. Here are the comments by council. One other thing I'll say in addition to the COVID, thank you all very much, is remind you again to be counted. The census is going on. We have a few more, a little bit more time that's been granted across the country to be able to get an accurate count, and we're still lagging behind. So right now, if you have not, if you have not been counted, go to 2020census.gov and get it done. And next, I want to bring up number, the first item on the city manager's agenda and turn it over to Mr. Hughley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning to you and the members of council. I am pleased to bring forward Mr. Robert Landers as my choice to fill the position Director of the Columbus Civic Center. Mr. Landers is present this morning, and he is accompanied by his wife and three children. So, Mr. Landers, please come forward to the podium, and you can bring your family if you would like to bring them. I know that your wife stepped out and it may be beyond your control with your little ones this morning.
Good morning, everybody. Appreciate you guys inviting us down and having the opportunity. Yes, the little one, he's a little rambunctious, and he wants to run around, so the wife stepped out to kind of keep him under control.
So, Mayor and council, Mr. Landers has been thoroughly vetted and highly recommended by my selection team, composed of deputy city managers Lisa Goodwin and Pam Hodge, the finance director, Angelica Alexander, and our HR director, Rita Hollowell. And I see that he has members of the Civic Center team who have gathered behind him, and I think that's a good thing this morning. But Mr. Landers' selection is based on a proven record of performance. He has more than 10 years of experience in event operations and venue management. He has a proven record of successfully overseeing logistics and administration of events, security, guest services, crowd management, food services, and operations. He has executed successful events on a large scale at the Mercedes-Benz Stadium and Phillips Arena in Atlanta, ranging from 5,000 to 70,000 attendees. He is certified as a trained crowd management instructor through the International Association of Venue Management, RISK &amp; Incident Certified through the National Center of Spectator Sports Safety and Security, and a Serve Safe Manager Certified through the National Restaurant Association. He has successfully managed budgets exceeding $25 million. His emphasis has been in the area of revenue enhancements and spectator experience. With Rob, we expect to see a strong emphasis on creating a world-class venue while ensuring and creating that red carpet experience. We expect to see public-private partnerships and increased attendance at events. Rob's knowledge, background, and experience in venue management provides for a good transition for the Columbus Civic Center. I believe he will be a good fit for our community. Rob was born and raised in St. Louis, Missouri. He is a graduate of the University of Kansas, where he earned a bachelor's degree in sports management. He is currently on target to receive a master's degree in December 2020 from University of West Alabama in Business Administration. He has been married to his wife, who's standing beside him, Marissa, Landers, for five years. They have three children, as you can see. And so, Mayor and council, I want you to know that I'm confident that Rob will provide the continuity, stability, progress, and improvement we need at the Columbus Civic Center, and so I am proud to present for confirmation for the position of Director of the Columbus Civic Center, Mr. Rob Landers, this morning.
Move for approval, please. Motion and a second to approve Mr. Landers. All in favor, please stand and welcome him.
And so, Mr. Landers, would you have a word this morning?
I want to thank everyone, and, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you and city manager, deputy city manager, council members, for this opportunity. Obviously, my family is an integral part to my success, and my goal is to make Columbus my family as well. And with that being said, every event that we would do... city manager, council members, for this opportunity. Obviously, my family is an integral part to my success, and my goal is to make Columbus my family as well. And with that being said, every event that we would do, we're going to do it safely, and we're going to do it with a world-class experience. My goal is to, in every position I've been, is to lead by example, and definitely want to get to know the staff, the city, and do whatever I can to commit to the city to help this, help us to run a successful event and civic center.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Councilor House?
Good morning. This way.
Good morning.
I know you have a lot going on.
Yes, sir.
Well, it's a good thing. It's a good thing. That's the future. Nice to see you here this morning. Congratulations. I'm happy that the city manager read out everything this morning about your qualifications except you're Alpha Man.
I intentionally left that out.
He left that out for me. Okay. But I thank you for being here. Some of the brothers wanted to be here this morning, but they were tied up due to working from home and different things that are going on. But we will officially welcome you here to the city, and we thank you. I look forward to working with you. And the bio was very impressive. So during these times of COVID-19, I look forward to see the out-of-the-box thinking that you'll have to do to make this work. So I appreciate you. Welcome to Columbus.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Landers, we are thrilled to have you and your beautiful family here in our community, and we're extremely excited about you joining the Civic Center family. And I can tell with all of the ones that are here present, they feel the same way. We expect great things, and we want you to know if there's anything that any of us can do to help you in your endeavors, that you will reach out through the city manager and just let us know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Ms. City Manager, thank you. Excited about Mr. Landers being here. We'll now move on to the city attorney's agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Welcome again to Mr. Landers and his family. We've got some business items to vote on, Mayor. The zonings will run through pretty quickly. First one is .38 acres at 4,000 Buena Vista Road. It's ready for action.
Have a motion second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? That's a pass.
All right. Next one is 5.44 acres at 4219 Warm Springs Road. It's ready for adoption.
Motion approved? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Next one is .31 acres at 4508 Armor Road. It's ready for adoption.
Motion approved by Mayor Protem, second by Councilor House. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? Passes.
All right. Next is the text amendment to the UDO for special activity and technical center. It's ready for adoption.
There's a motion approved and a second. Any discussion to the text amendment? All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? Passes.
All right. Next is a text change also in the unified development ordinance for indoor amusement sales, fuel station, and massage therapy. That's ready for adoption.
Motion approved by Mayor Protem, second by Councilor House. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? That passes.
All right, Mayor. Now we have the millage ordinance for the three urban service districts and the three business improvement districts. That's ready for adoption.
Motion approved by Mayor Protem, second by Councilor House. Any discussion as to the urban taxing districts? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? They're approved.
And the next item is a first reading, Mayor, of an ordinance amending Chapter 13 to revise the billing and collection method for solid waste fees for commercial businesses. That was discussed at the last meeting. See if there are any questions around the table.
Doesn't appear to be any.
All right. Well, we will take a vote on this at our first meeting in July then. And we've got some resolutions, Mayor. The first one up is our attorney fee resolution that's incurred for legal services during the year on various issues. Number eight's ready for adoption.
Our motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Councilor Garrett? Oh, okay. If not, all in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? That passes.
And then number nine, I think Councilor Garrett may have a comment or a motion.
I'd like that to be discussed in executive session regarding personnel matters, and there's some things I'd like to bring to council's attention.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just request to go into executive session later on, so you want to hold this one in advance until we return from that? Okay.
That's fine, Mayor. We just need an executive session requested also by the city manager for personnel matters, and we'll take that up at the appropriate time.
Okay.
And that's all we have.
All right. We'll move to the public agenda. First up is Ms. Teresa Alameen, representing the Southern Anti-Racism Network regarding Juneteenth cancellation. Welcome, Ms. Alameen. You'll have five minutes from the clock to start after you introduce yourself and state your address.
And if you could give me the one-minute signal?
I will. I'll let you know when you've got one minute left.
Okay. Teresa Alameen, 3911 Steam Mill Road. Council members, Mr. Mayor, this is a time like no other that we've seen, when we're in the middle of a global pandemic, and the awareness of fighting racism worldwide, particularly anti-black racism, is significant. And I'm a person who came of age in the Black Power Movement in the '60s, when everything was in motion, and we thought that the revolution was right around the corner. Well, I can tell you what's happening now is more significant than anything I've seen in terms of the awareness of people to not just say, "I'm not racist," but to say, "I am anti-racist," which is really key. And, Mr. Mayor, you took office in January of 2019, so you're not quite halfway through your first term. And I think citizens are obligated to give you feedback, because when people are in power in government, you can be an oppressive adversary-type person, or you can be a public servant or a public leader, servant, leader. I really appreciate Ms. Browder speaking with me so we can understand more about what happened when an event that was planned by some young folks in Columbus for Juneteenth was canceled. There may be some more details that I don't know, but I think you're obligated, Mr. Mayor, to know what is the Achilles Society and who is Christie Holmes, because those are the people who were putting it on. And I know there was a reaction, as Ms. Browder explained it to me. Someone came to Parks and Recs and said, "Do you know about this big event that's happening that's on Facebook?" Well, I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, I'm on Facebook, big time. I've been on Facebook since 2008. This group has been on Facebook less than five years. And so you can't believe what you see on Facebook about how big something is going to be. The Achilles Society has two groups on Facebook. One has 65 members, and one has 23 members. So if 20 people were going to show up in the park on that day, that was a wish that I think the organizers really wanted. If I were you, what I would have done, I would have taken a detail to the park, couple of deputies, city manager, deputy city manager Goodwin, and I would have tried to see, "Who are these people organizing this in my town?" And if you felt the need to have that cease and desist order in your pocket because you might have to use it, then you could have used it. But you want to meet these 20-something, 30-something-year-old folks because you support reentry. Some of these folks involved in this, they're returning citizens. You really want to get to know who the Achilles Society is, the people who are putting on the Juneteenth event that was canceled. You want to know them, because I know what you're about, and I tell you, you want to know who they are. I know I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alameen. And you're correct. I would like to get to know them and talk to them, and just for clarification, we weren't made aware, I was not made aware of this until, and I don't think the city manager was either, until that evening. And we would love an opportunity to meet with them and help them go through the proper process and set up another event in the future. And I'm, we've got one more person on the public agenda, and then I'm going to go to the city manager. He has an update on how citizens can make sure that they do follow the process so that they can have those events and have them safely. So let me call up our next individual on the public agenda. Ms. Tonsa Thomas sent an email saying that she was not going to be here for good reason. She just had her first granddaughter. She didn't, I believe the mother did all the work, but she's going to be getting a lot of the benefit as a grandparent, so she was not able to be here today. Next is Ms. Gabrielle Hall, representing Family Reconstruction Regarding Implementation of Community Policing and Police Community Outreach and How It Will Benefit the Community and the Local Police Department. Welcome, Ms. Hall.
Thank you.
If you would, state your name and your address, and I've got a little timer here. I'll start it. You'll get five minutes, and when you get to four, you'll see me wave back just to kind of let you know.
All right. First and foremost, I do want to thank everyone for allowing me to come today. City council and mayor, excuse me. I am Gabrielle Hall. I'm representing Family Reconstruction in District 3, address 747 Winston Road. And nationwide police and community aggression is growing increasingly every day, and we aren't getting closer to ratifying it. I am here to discuss a solution to this controversial issue here in this city. By implementing community police and outreach within the police department can resolve many issues that are relevant today. Community policing gives the police and community an opportunity to build relationships and trust with each other. Selecting passionate law enforcers to work in a certain community can help decrease the crime rate and police complaints. Implementing community outreach allows the community to know who is working in their neighborhood and building relationships with the policemen, law enforcers, through a non-crisis interaction. I am not motioning to defund the police department, but to reform the budget so more money can be spent to increase police likeness, trust, and non-hostile engagement. These strategies can also increase job satisfaction, the perception of police nobility, and decrease burnout, improve retention, and minimize police depression because caused by harsh realities that police are facing on a daily basis. I am here to assist with identifying solutions and acting on them. Having your support and blessings gives us an opportunity to make positive changes in our community that can ultimately influence other communities. Thank you.
Ms. Hall, thank you. And for the record, I think you've hit on something very, very important, and that's something that we have advocated and we're going to continue to advocate. So I will reach out to you for your ideas, because the more that the police department can communicate with the public, I think the more we can make sure that both parties feel safe. And that's the core mission when having any interaction, because it just makes it safer for the police officer, and it makes it safer for the individual. So we have, our police department does a very good job at creating opportunities to get into the communities this body and this mayor has to take on as a challenge to try to make sure that we can recruit and retain enough officers to do the community policing. That's a mission, or, excuse me, that's an objective of our police department, is to get into the communities, get to know the people, give a car, get out of the cars, walk the neighborhoods. And quite frankly, because of a myriad of issues, some of it's funding, but a lot of it is a changing workforce. We have not gotten our police department, I think right now, I don't know where the chief is, last I heard it was about 84 officers short. So we're continuing to try to get those up, but I will reach out to you, and we'll talk about your ideas, because I happen to believe in the same thing, that we've got to get them communicating, talking, make the community feel comfortable, and that's going to make the police officers safer as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes, sir. Councilor House?
Ms. Hall, thank you for being here this morning. I'd like to request through the mayor that we get together, the mayor, the city manager, yourself, the police chief, and anybody else that needs to be in, city councilors. It's something that's been talked about for a few years, but like you mentioned, that we are understaffed at this point. But take time to reach out to the mayor. I'll reach back out to him to make sure that we can sit down and discuss how maybe we can get it started. It's been something that I've thought about for maybe four or five years now. It's something that I saw when I was growing up as a child, and we knew kind of sort of who was in the neighborhood from time to time. And once you get comfortable, there's a better relationship with the police department, the officers in the neighborhood. There's better information shared in order to keep everything safe. So thank you for being here, and we'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any further comments? All right. It's city manager's agenda, but I know he had an update as well.
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak to the question about Juneteenth. I've heard Juneteenth was canceled. I've heard there was a cease and desist order, and I just kind of want to get some facts out on the table. And let me just say that I didn't know Ms. Alameen was on the agenda to speak about Juneteenth. I learned late yesterday, but I'd already asked staff to put together a PowerPoint that I refer to as a rapid-fire presentation, where multiple directors would come and talk about how to rent or reserve city facilities. And I'd asked them to do three slides or less for each area where we do rent or reserve facilities and be prepared to present today, because I wanted to clear up any confusion that's out there about how to rent or reserve city facilities. And so I requested that you allow me to bring it up after hearing Ms. Alameen speak to Juneteenth cancellation and/or cease and desist order that is directed as it came from you. And so I do want to clear up the organization structure for one. Parks and Rec Director and the Parks and Rec Department falls under falls under Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin. And for those who don't know her, I'm gonna ask her to stand. That's Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin. Now, she reports to me. And so on Friday, somewhere around three, three forty or so, I received a call from Parks and Rec Director Holly Browder. And it was a conference call with the deputy city manager, her boss, on that call. And they wanted to bring to my attention a block party that's been around on Facebook that would be occurring at Rigdon Park. Of course, I was not aware of it. I'm on Facebook, but I had not seen it. And I had them to explain the facts and the timeline to me about this block party. And I wanted to have the answer to a number of questions. Now, Holly Browder did not be here today, but the assistant director is here. And just to allow me to get the facts on the table and clarify the matter, Mayor, I would ask that you and the council indulge me for just a few minutes. Because I have a few questions that I want on the record from Parks and Rec. And I want to say this before I call on her, that I'm an African-American. And I have been attending the Juneteenth event at the Trade Center as my wife is a member of Afikafa Afis sorority. They have a Juneteenth event at the Trade Center that they've been doing since 2003. That's seventeen years. And I believe I've attended every one of those Juneteenth events. And I see some in the room who have attended the Juneteenth event. And I see some who have not attended the Juneteenth event. But for those who don't know about that event here in Columbus at the Trade Center that's been there for the last seventeen years, it's an opportunity for us to dress in our jeans and western wear, our boots. And with your western cap, we call them the cowboy caps, some of us. But we dress up. And I've been doing it for seventeen years. Now, that's the only Juneteenth event that I know about in this town over the last seventeen years because I go every year. And it's an opportunity for us to recognize at the AKA Sorority Juneteenth event, but we recognize, honor, and respect Juneteenth, the history and tradition of coming together with purpose and action on this date. And I want to commend and thank the members of Afikafa Afis Sorority for doing the Juneteenth event over the last seventeen years. But, so when I got this call, I asked a series of questions. And I've asked those questions multiple times. And so I'm gonna ask some questions here just to get things on the table. And then I'm gonna call on the PowerPoint that I asked them to put together about how to rent or reserve a facility. Now, you know, and of course, my church, I'll say this, has its annual picnic at Shirley Winston every year. Franchise Missionary Baptist Church. Each year when we are going to have that picnic, I call Parks and Rec because they charge me with the responsibility. I call Parks and Rec. They always email me an application to complete. I complete that application and send it back to Parks and Rec. And then they tell me what deposit or payment is going to be. And I have my church to send the check to Parks and Rec. So we rent, we reserve, we pay to use Shirley Winston every year. So when you called me, not you, but your director, I asked you, of course, we know that we're not having large events at the parks or facilities right now because of COVID-19. We're not having them at or in the parks. So I asked you, was the facility rented or reserved?
No, sir.
And your answer is?
No, sir. It was not.
And so I asked you, how'd you then know about this event? How did you learn about this event? And tell me, what did you do when you learned about it?
On the Thursday...
Stand closer to the mic.
Closer. On the Thursday before the Friday event, we got a call from a citizen and sent us a Facebook flyer. We had turned down their request to have a large group. And they said, do you know about this one? What's the difference? And we didn't at that point. So from Thursday through Friday, we tried to get in touch with people from the Facebook post. We finally got them on Friday.
So you knew the people who were going to have this event through a Facebook post?
Correct.
Okay, and so you tried to reach them? Okay, explain.
We reached out to them. Our director, Holly Browder, tracked them down through the Facebook flyer. And she had a conversation with them about going through the proper process, that we were not allowing this in the parks right now. We had already canceled events for April, May, and June that we already had on the books. And that's how it got started with how we knew about it.
Okay, tell me more about any interaction or conversation.
Well, the issue was on the Facebook post, they had that a hundred and sixty-nine people were going. And then they had another six hundred and something interested. And so, of course, we can't do large events like that. So we reached out to her about the procedures of, you have to have a certificate of insurance for a crowd that large if we were able to have it.
So you have to have a certificate of insurance for a crowd that large?
Correct, yes, sir.
Would you have charged them?
Yes, sir. There's a fee for it. It just depends on what all they're gonna have out there. They would have to have a sound permit from the police department if they were gonna use amplified sound. They have to have security if it's over a hundred people. There's just a myriad of things that you have to do in order to have a large event like that in our parks.
And so did you talk, have that conversation, convey any of that?
Yes, sir. Director Browder did.
Okay, and so what feedback did you get?
The end result from the person organizing it, that she was gonna cancel it. But I do wanna say, I don't know anything about a cease and desist order. We don't do those. And that was her one question, is why we issued that order. Just to be clear, Parks and Rec doesn't do that. But she agreed to cancel it. But then we had a lot of Facebook pushback about their going anyway. And so I think that's when Director Browder got you and Deputy City Manager Goodwin involved.
That's the point that you got, you called me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I believe I said to you that, so if we don't have all those things in place, then we cannot have an event at a park at a time that we are not allowing large events at the park. COVID-19 is real. And we have a responsibility to do all that we can do to protect the citizens of Columbus.
Yes, sir. That's what you told us.
Okay, and so when I got off the phone with them, that is when I called the mayor to say, Mayor, here's what you need to know and what's going on. And you had not heard of that, Mayor. And so, and so at that point, we considered the fact, the matter closed and we were going to move on because there was no rental, no reservation. None of the process had been met or followed. And so we could not have a large-scale event in the park because we're still dealing with COVID-19. And then about five o'clock, I mean, this is three forty or so, about five o'clock, I hear from one of the TV stations directed to me by the mayor's office, the chief of staff. And I share it with them. I share it with them a couple of things that, and these are the points that I share, that Parks and Rec creation officials learned about this event from a Facebook post. So no use of the park facility is on record or authorized. To rent or use a park facility requires an application and approval. This did not occur. Had a request been properly made, Parks and Rec officials would have determined if the event could be held in the location with CDC and Department of Public Health protocols in place to include social distancing and wearing of masks. None of this occurred. And so our goal is to keep Columbus citizens safe as our positive COVID-19 numbers are on the rise. That is what I share with the media. And so I considered the matter closed.
Well, and let me just add one thing. When the city manager called me, I mean, as he typically does, he made absolutely the right decision. The reason that those protocols are in place is to ensure that everybody has equal access to the parks. And everybody has an opportunity to rent or to use them at any time as long as they go through the proper procedures. So, and I concur.
So I wanted to get the facts on the table because I did see Facebook posts say, well, why are you having market days? Well, market days is controlled by Uptown Columbus for one. But then we had some say in that market days were required to provide assurance to us on how they would do social distancing and meet all of the protocols of CDC and the Department of Public Health. In other words, they were gonna space, have distance between their tables or whatever they were doing, all of those things. And that plan had to be accepted by us. And so all I ask for, as these people report to me, a city manager, and what I ask for is that we do things, as we say in the black church, decent and in order. That's all I'm looking for. And if we do them decent and in order, then we can get things done. And then we won't have all of the confusion. So I wanted to bring all of these departments here today to talk about how to rent and how to reserve city facilities. And we just gotta do it right. I tell my six-foot-four, two-hundred-and-twenty-pound son, you know, when you get stopped by the police, you gotta do your part right. And so we just gotta do our part right. You know, you gotta have a driver's license to drive. You just can't go drive your car around town. You gotta have a license to fish. You gotta have a license to carry a gun. I have a gun permit. When I bought my gun, I didn't just say, I'm gonna carry it and I don't need a license. And so we just gotta do things decent and in order. And we've gotta make sure that our young people understand, you gotta be right. That's the first thing. And when you be right, I told my kids that throughout school. When you're right, when you're in school and there's a problem, then let me deal with it because we're gonna deal with it. And so I just want to do things decent and in order. And I wanted to get the facts on the table that we, I recognize, and there's no way, as an African-American and a deputy city manager as an African-American who the Parks and Rec report to, we're just gonna cease and desist and cancel a Juneteenth event because we recognize, honor, and respect Juneteenth, the history. And so we just gotta have the facts on the table and we need to do it right. And so it wasn't my intention to address this matter today, but it came up and I've seen the Facebook post. And when things are wrong, and I don't care who you look like, you can be white, black, brown, or blue. You can be even around this room. If I think you're wrong, I'm gonna tell you I think you're wrong. Because I'm bold enough to do that. And if you're right, I'm gonna tell you you're right. I'm bold enough to say you're right. And I'm bold enough to say that we've gotta do things decent and in order. We gotta do them right. We did not cancel a Juneteenth event. And we did not do a cease and desist. And I wanted to get that out on the table. And I'll be happy to answer any questions around the room. And if there are no questions, I'm going to ask that we proceed with how to rent or reserve a city facility. And so I'm gonna ask them to key up the PowerPoint. And I believe Parks and Rec is first on that PowerPoint. And I'm gonna ask the others to come close because it's gonna be a rapid-fire kind of presentation. And it's gonna be one after the other. And so if you've got the PowerPoint ready, we will proceed into that discussion. And I hope that this will be helpful as we go forward in reserving or renting spaces throughout the city. And so first, we've got Becky Glisten because Holly Browder did not be here. You have the...
I can't really see that.
Okay.
I mean, I can tell you though.
Well, and what you see on the screen is what came from the city departments.
Right. Okay, really, really quick. Our first slide is, all of our reservations must be made in person. We do several types. We have our meeting rooms, we have our rec centers, and we have like the aquatic center. We have parks and pavilions and that sort of thing that we run out. Everything has to be done in person. Has to be done a couple of weeks in advance, two to three weeks in advance to ensure that we've got it on the books and everything's correct. The rental payment, as well as the deposit, must be paid at the time of booking the reservation. And all park services facilities, which are all of our outdoor facilities, are limited to eight hours. You must have, if it's a large event, like we said earlier, you must have a certificate of insurance. You must have permits for sound, alcohol, closures, et cetera, as well as a confirmation of security if required. Some of our contracts, we require security for it's according to the type of event. The security deposit will be refunded within thirty business days after your event as long as there's no damage to the property or mess. And it'll be sent to you by check within thirty days. Our park pavilions, like our amphitheaters and that sort of thing, they have a very small fee. That's just to help us maintain it and keep it up. No deposit required on those. And you just basically have to come in and fill out an application with our office. And then whichever kind of rental you have, we will take care of all the steps for you and the amplified sound, the permits, and all that kind of stuff. Is that too quick? Okay.
Are there any questions about rental of Parks and Rec facilities? Okay.
Good morning.
The fourth slide come up?
It's gonna be, okay, Ms. Ivy. I see steps to obtain a permit. The chief. And I'm gonna rely on you, Tia Shu Johnson, to put the mid-order.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Steps to obtain a permit. You'll first make contact with the police department by phone or email. And we will get you an application for the permit. We can email it to you, we can mail it to you, or you can pick it up in person at the front desk. We approve of permits for amplified sound, parades, festivals, public demonstrations, picketing permits, and restaurant viewing permits. We do temporary street closure permits as well. Once the application for the permit is filled out, you drop it off at the public safety building. You can email it to myself or the office admin. You can also mail the permit in. It is transferred over to an approval form. It is reviewed again. At that time, it is taken to the chief of police, chief forum. He either approves or denies the permit. Either way, it is signed. Once he has signed the permit, whether it's approved or denied, we then send it by email to the applicant. Or we call the applicant, they can pick it up in person. Or we can mail the denial or approval to them. For a temporary, for a temporary street closure permit, you must have your applicant... For a temporary, um, for a temporary street closure permit, you must have your application submitted 30 days prior to the event. There's a 30 day notice, notice required by the city. All parade, festival, picketing, and public demonstration permits must be submitted 10 days prior to the event. Festival, picking, or demonstration permits with 15 or less participants, you can give us a five hour notice for those permits, and it must be addressed to the Chief of Police. And it's the duty of the applicant to also arrange security for their events. Law enforcement work those permits in off-duty capacity, it is not covered by the city. If you have any other questions or more information, you can look at the City Ordinance, Chapter 17B. They've got more information in that chapter.
Any questions about how to get a permit, protest, street closures, temporary street closures, and required security? You just can't go out and do it. You just can't go out and take over a street and march and walk down the street. You got to...
No, sir, you cannot. And even Uptown Inc., they even get a permit to have the Market Days, and they have a permit on file for Market Days. They don't just have it. They apply for an application, they get, get an application and apply for a permit.
Yes. Okay. Any questions around the table on that? Thank you. Chief, did you have anything?
No, I, I felt it necessary that you meet Sergeant Williams because that's who anybody that applies for a permit for anything in Columbus will meet. You'll meet Sergeant Williams. We will talk with you, we will attempt to meet with you prior to the event, sometimes more than once, to make sure that you have a safe event, not only for yourself, but the citizens that may be around you, and we can help you and help traffic and help pedestrian traffic flow much smoother if we know what's going to happen prior to it taking place.
Sure. Thank you. Next.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Yvonne Ivy, and I'm going to talk about how to apply for an alcoholic beverage Okay, what is an alcoholic beverage, um, special event permit? An alcoholic beverage special event permit authorizes to sell and or service of liquor, beer, or wine during private or public special events, such as fundraisers, festivals, concerts, grand openings, holiday celebrations, receptions, special occasions, et cetera, for the consumption of the alcoholic beverages on the premises of the event. The permit is subject to all laws and ordinances regulating the time for selling and or selling such beverages, and only valid at the location specified for the event. Events cannot exceed more than three consecutive days. Alcoholic beverages must be purchased from a licensed alcoholic beverage wholesaler distributor. It cannot be purchased from a retailer, such as the grocery stores or the liquor stores. Who can apply for an alcoholic beverage special event permit? Only bona fide non-profit organizations as recognized by the Internal Revenue Service pursuant to the provisions of Title 26, Code Section 501, subsection C, D, and E. Also, business establishments that hold an on-premise mixed drinks, beer, and/or wine alcoholic beverage license, with the exception of establishments licensed under the category of a non-alcohol retail establishment. And we're talking about places like spas and nail salons and event centers pursuant to Section 3-1 GG of the Columbus Code. The same business establishments can also apply for a permit to cater alcoholic beverages for a special event. I'm sorry. Did I mess up? I'm sorry. Okay, we're going to talk about how to apply for an alcoholic beverage special event. Applicants, um, need, shall commit, shall submit a completed alcohol special event permit request with a non-refundable $25 administrative processing fee for each event. Each event, remember, lasts, cannot last more than three consecutive days. So if it lasts more than three consecutive days, we're going to charge you on that fourth day another $25. You shall, um, submit your request and the fee to the Finance Department Revenue Division at least 30 days before the event. Your request can be mailed to the Finance Department, P.O. Box 1397, Columbus, Georgia 31902, or the physical location at 3111 Citizens Way, Columbus, Georgia 31906. You can also email your request and the processing fee to yiv at columbusga.org and cfarley at columbusga.org, and that's Yvonne Ivy and Crystal Farley. Crystal is located in the city manager's office. She's the administrative assistant for the city manager. Other requirements, in order for you to complete the event, as far as having an alcohol, holding, having alcohol at your special event, you also have to have a state alcoholic beverage special event permit. And I have the links in which you need to apply for, if you are a nonprofit, you would go to the Department of Revenue site, and even if you are a, if you are a business establishment, the hose occurring on alcoholic beverage license, you will still need to apply for that special event permit through the state of Georgia. And also, if you have, if you're catering the event, you also have to file what we call, what the state calls a quantity and destination report to the state of Georgia, in which you're reporting to them how much alcohol you're bringing to that unlicensed location, and how much unopened alcohol you're bringing back.
So, I, I just can't go out and rent some building and ask my cousins to come in, a bartender, and serve alcohol?
No, you cannot, sir.
That's against the law.
Yes, sir.
And so if you go to a party at a building and people are serving alcohol who are, don't have ABC cars, it didn't get catered by a licensed provider, that's an illegal party.
That's correct, sir.
And somebody's going to jail if they get caught.
I'll leave that to the Chief of Police, yes, sir.
Okay. Are there questions around the table? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm here to present on how to reserve the CSC community room, as well as the grounds of the CSC community room, Government Center Plaza, and the grounds of the Government Citizens are able to go on to the city's website at columbusga.org and stick, and click on the city manager's page. On the city manager's page, there's a link that citizens are able to click on. Once they click on the link, they are to reserve, click on reserve a room, select the room type, and the room type can be CSC community room, the ground floor conference room, this Government Center Plaza, the outside of the Government Center, whether it's on the Springer side or the Eternal Flame side, as well as the outside area of the City Service Center, City Service Center. Once they select the room type, they are to select, select the date. If the date is not reserved, of course, if the date is already booked, of course, they will get an error message and they're not able to select that date. Then they are also able to select the time, the beginning time, as well as the end time, and then check the availability of the room. Once again, if the room is already booked, you will not be able to proceed on to the next step, and you must choose another date or another time. Once you have completed those steps, you will complete the information on the screen, on the screen as far as what type of room setup, whether there's a conference square, a U shape, or a classroom style of type room you would like to have it booked. After you select the room setup style, you are, then will be able to hit submit, and you should receive an approval confirmation email by staff. If you do not receive a confirmation email by staff, either something went on once you submitted the information online, or we need to get in contact with you, or you need to get in contact with us to see what's going on, why you was not approved for that room. All outside reservations at the City Service Center, as well as the Government Center, must be approved by the Deputy City Manager or City Manager. So if you have any kind of outside event, once you hit submit, once you put that information on our website, we, staff will get in contact with the city manager or deputy city manager to get approval of the rooms. If you do not receive an approval email, that means that your event has not been approved, and we will reach out to you as soon as possible. As far as the city responsibility, once you reserve a room, we are to make sure that the room is clean, your room is set up prior to the event start time, and all, if you ask for equipment, like a PowerPoint presentation, all the equipment is working properly, and you're able to present your PowerPoint presentation. As far as the citizen, we request that the citizens come to the area at least 30 minutes prior to the start time to make sure that your room is set up properly, and if there's any minor adjustments that you would like, to please contact staff. We recommend that you do not move any chairs, tables, podiums, or anything once the room is set up, because we've had several issues with equipment being torn or broken due to several issues. And if you have any changes as far as your room, to please contact us by phone or email to let us know any kind of changes as far as your room setup, at least 24 hours in advance. And keep in mind that if you do reserve the building at the CSC or the Government Center, that you cannot reserve prior to 8:30 a.m., and if you do anything after 5:00 p.m. or on weekends, you have to get in contact with the Sheriff Department, and there's a $30 security fee that must be paid to the sheriff deputy on site.
So, um, the plaza outside the Government Center, whether it's on the 9th Street side or the 10th Street side, or the space in front of the City Services Center building, or on the backside, you just can't have a large group of people to show up and decide you're going to have an event?
No, sir.
You got to reserve it. In fact, if you reserve it, we'll help you. We'll set up a microphone, podium, chairs, at no cost.
At no cost, yes, sir.
We just need to know.
Correct.
You just can't show up.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions around the table? Thank you.
So, at, at the golf courses, we have, we have a form that we use, and if someone is interested in conducting an outing, a charitable outing, or, or just a golf tournament, they want to host it, they want us to host it on the golf courses, and then we just begin with a simple form with contact information. We, we do need to know how many participants they have in mind. The main purpose of this is so we can actually satisfy their needs. At the same time, we don't want to reserve too much space or too little space because we have other citizens that want to play golf at the facility. So we, we're going to work around their group size. And we also understand that things have to be flexible because in golf tournaments and outings, there are many last minute entries and, and exits, and things change. So you just have to have a general idea and make plans accordingly. So we're, we're looking for that kind of information. We wonder how many holes they want to play, the certain golf course that they want. We have more than one course, so we want to know which, where they want it. So basically, we, we want a sense of their expectations, you know? So they're applying for, I'd like to have this event, this many people at this location at this time of day. And of course, you know, there's other factors that may come into plays with the weather and so on. So that allows me to communicate back with them, my ability to provide them with what they're looking for. The, you know, whether or not they want to range balls is, is a question, it's just a simple yes or no. And then, as Yvonne Ivy had mentioned about, about beer, it's, you know, it's stated on this form so that everybody has a clear understanding of, of how beer is handled. There is a, an alcohol permit at the golf course, and people have to act accordingly, which means, you know, as was previously stated, you can't just go to Sam's or Walmart and, and bring your own beer in. So it's just like any other place that has a permit. So that's stated there. And then there's a rate structure in place, so depending on the purpose of the event, it might help them decide if they want to play on a, on a less expensive weekday, or if they want to play on a more expensive weekend. And those rates are there. There's discounts in place for people that do their food and beverage business with us, so that it's just all, you know, plain to see. And, and that's really, that's basically it. They sign the agreement, they know what to expect from me, I know what to expect from them, and we have the ability to communicate because it does require further communication. So that's basically it.
So, any questions of Jim Arant, Golf Authority?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And so we have Haley Tilery at the Trade Center.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. So good to see some of your faces. So when booking an event at the Trade Center, there's several things that you can do to reserve your spot. The best thing that we tell clients, call us. Just give us a call at our front desk, that's where we can get some great information. Our number's posted on our website, you can Google it, it's there. And to email one of our event coordinators. On our website, we have all of our names listed, photo, direct email, so that, and what they specialize in. We also have a way, you can contact us on social media. We have found that's the way a lot of people prefer to communicate at times, but we found that Wedding Wire is where a lot of broads go, so they can put an event inquiry through Wedding Wire. The best thing is requesting a planning kit on our website. This is a, takes you step by step on how many people, what the day you prefer, if you are having a band, just all of these questions. That way, we can get as much information as possible to create an event packet for that client. And then they can come to our office anytime, Monday through Fridays are business hours, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and night and weekend hours as well, just our schedules vary based on events. The best thing for the client to realize, some crucial things that we need, just to know what type of event they want to have, and I've just realized I've not been going to the slides. Here we go. Is their name, the company or organization if applicable, their phone number, email address, what their preferred method of contact is, what's their preferred event day or dates, what type of event, and right now especially, how many number of guests are expected to be at the event. Once we receive that information, myself or one of our event coordinators will look up availability and contact the client and discuss pricing and different protocols that are in place. If a client decides they want to book the space, we will then request information to start building a lease agreement, and also letting them know the importance of liability insurance that we have in place. The LEC will be required to get event insurance to help with date deadlines that are listed in the event agreement. And one thing I want to show, it's been asked by a lot of clients about social distancing. So each event, we create a special plan based on that event to ensure safety, not only for the guests, but for the employees that are conducting the event. One thing that we're doing that's been going very well is called Be Smart Colga, and it's an acronym. S stands for shield, shield your cough and sneezes. M is mask, we can't require a mask for everybody that walks in, but we highly recommend it. A is apart, how are we making sure event spaces allow six feet of social distancing? Rents, we have sanitizer stations before you enter any of our event spaces, as well as in all bathrooms, and tidy, make sure you keep your area tidy. A quick acronym, because there's a lot of rules out there, but we follow this, we can be smart and have events that are safe. And that's what we're doing day by day.
So let me ask you, because you have multiple events and sometimes parking concerns, can a, a group just show up on the premises and have a large scale event outside the Trade Center?
No, we highly recommend communication takes place. We did have a large event show up this past Sunday, and security notified me, I went down, just because we got to know when an event or, or people are showing up. Yes, we are a public building, but all the spaces are rentable, and we may have a client that has the space already rented, and most importantly, the safety of the building and for the people that would be coming on the property.
Any questions of Haley Tilery? Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Next, we've got the Civic Center, Deputy City Manager Goodwin.
Good morning, and I'm going to ask the Civic Center team if they will come and stand with me. For anyone who wishes to rent the Columbus Civic Center or the ice rink, 17,000 square foot arena floor here at the Civic Center, the ice rink, also 17,000 square feet of rentable space, again, that's just the arena. In the Civic Center, we have the, the hospitality suites as well that people also rent, and then, of course, the outside, all of the parking spaces. then, of course, the outside, all of the parking spaces and the parking lot is also rentable. People cannot just show up and just have an event because it's just, you know, a lot of space. You have to go through the process. And behind me, I have the Event Services Manager Jeremy Ackles. I have Nixon Patterson, who's our event coordinator, and Lisa Thomas-Cutts, who is our box office manager. So, if a person wants to rent, this is where they have to start. They will contact the Civic Center at seven zero six two two five four four eight two. Ask for the events team, ask for either of these gentlemen, Jeremy Ackles or Nixon Patterson, they kind of get it started outside of the director. They get all of the information that is needed regarding the event, the type of event that you want, what your needs are, they package all of that because there are costs associated with all of that. And so, it all depends on the number of people, the type of event, kind of, you know, that will determine what's required in terms of the number of security or janitorial staff, ushers, and the like. We have a whole list of things that we have to go through to determine what's going to make your event successful. And so, they will package that, get a cost for your event, they will send you that agreement to look at, the two of you and the three, between the director and the event staff, we will then go and say, okay, we need a little bit more of this, or this is too much, we can, you know, kind of scale it down some, based on what you're looking for. And so, that's it. And then, of course, it goes then to ticketing. After we determine what's needed, then the box office gets involved. Lisa Cuts, she gets involved and starts building the event for them. And so, again, we welcome any events here. We want to make sure that we fill this ten-thousand-seat arena up, fourteen hundred over at the Ice Rink. And so, we want to be able to have those opportunities for you to come and have your event. But again, it starts, first of all, with you notifying us so that we can make the event successful by giving you just what you need to make it successful.
And so, Mayor and Council, any questions of Deputy City Manager regarding the Civic Center? If not, thank you. And Mayor and Council, thank you for indulging me. Our buildings and facilities are available for rent or just use, and in so many instances, there is no cost. We just need to know. If you want to use a community room at the City Services Center, there is no cost, we'll set it up, make everything. We just need to know. And so, rent or reserve by notifying and going through the process, let's do it decent and in order, and then we will minimize and eliminate confusion. And that's my goal.
This is a good presentation. I mean, it's significant because I know there's a lot of folks out there that may want to rent one of these facilities and don't know how. So, I think it'd be great if Council wants to share this piece of the presentation, pull it out of the meeting, and I know we're going to try to do that, just to make sure people understand what they need to do in order to do it so that their event can be pulled off safely, effectively, and efficiently. So, very good presentation. Thank you, Ms. City Manager. It's your agenda.
We've dealt with item number one on my agenda. And so, the next item on my agenda, let me get myself together here very quick. I've got the...
Route change. I was going to say, I think it's the route change.
Yes. Got the Metra, T, or proposed route changes. We're asking you to approve the request to adopt or authorize Metro to make the proposed changes that we brought before you on last Tuesday. The consultant was here, we went through all of those, and we're asking your approval on those route, proposed route changes.
We have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem. Second, is that Counsel Barnes? All right, any discussion on the route changes? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? Passes.
And next, I've got Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan, asking your approval for authorization requested for the Transportation Director to approve, submit, and implement a safety plan on behalf of the city and in compliance with federal requirements.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? That passes.
And next, Mayor and Council, I've got the CARES Act stimulus funding and asking your approval for Metro to apply for CARES Act stimulus funding for FY21, six point nine million dollars.
Motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Passes.
Got a lease agreement, fifty-six oh one, Verens Parkway, you know that's the Virginia College Building, we're purchasing it.
Motion approved by Mayor Pro Tem. Second by Counselor House. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That passes.
Got a quick claim deed, First Avenue and Eighteenth Street, requesting to execute this quick claim deed to the Development Authority for the Mercer Medical Project.
Motion approved by Mayor Pro Tem. Second by Counselor House. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Passes.
Got a street acceptance portion of Frank Hauser Avenue, portion of Spring Days Drive, and portion of Queen B Drive.
Motion approved by Counselor Barnes. Second by Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? That's approved.
Got some purchases. I've got integrated transit system, annual contract with SyncRomatics and its automated vehicle locators and computer-aided dispatch, asking your approval.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the purchase, all the purchases, A through K. Is there anyone that somebody like pulled for further discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote on it, but then, Ms. City Manager, if you would, run through them. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Ms. City Manager?
Okay, you've heard A, and then B would be compact track loader attachment. It's seventy-eight thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars. C is the repair of E1 fire truck, it's thirty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars, and it's an insurance payment because we were not at fault, and it came from State Farm Insurance. D, replacement vehicle, equipment truck with modifications for traffic engineering, forty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. I've got another replacement, full-size crew cab pickup for animal control, it's forty thousand five hundred and seven dollars. Got a commercial login loader, grab-all, it's two hundred and one thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars. Got state-mandated solid waste disposal fees, fifty-nine thousand sixty-six dollars. Got parking lot control equipment for Bay Avenue Garage and Ninth Street Lot. And I've got a cargo van with build-out unit, it's a replacement vehicle, it's thirty-seven thousand nine forty-three dollars for traffic engineering. I've got guaranteed maximum price amendment on Government Center life safety upgrades that we briefed you on last week, four hundred eighty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. That electronic validating fare boxes, and it's thirty thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars. Those are the purchases, Mayor and Council. And I've got some updates. I will start with CDBG funding update. We've got Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge here, and she's got someone that you want to, she wants to introduce for the first time here at this council. Deputy City Manager Hodge.
So, good morning, Mayor and Council. We have a brief update related to CARES Act funding to be received through CDBG as an entitlement. This morning, Rob Scott, who is the new Director of Community Reinvestment and Real Estate, is here. You were able to meet him virtually at the council meeting when he was appointed. He's been on the job, this is his second week, so he's just going to give you a brief update on that funding, so we just wanted to introduce him formally to the Mayor and Council and welcome him to the City of Columbus.
Welcome, Rob. You look a lot taller when you're not on a computer screen.
Thank you so much for having me here today. All right. All right. The CARES Act provided funding to the City of Columbus through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Community Development Block Grant. The City of Columbus's CARES Act allocation is nine hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The funds may be used to cover or reimburse the allowable costs to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus and its impact on local communities. We plan on leveraging the implementation through partnerships with nonprofit agencies that are going to administer the programs directly to individuals. The proposed CDBG activities have to meet the national objective of benefiting low-to-moderate income persons or serving those who live in low-income census tracts. Some key dates for you to remember, we, our office will be hosting a webinar for interested nonprofits to learn more about the process and to learn about the application. The application period will be open between the periods of July thirteenth through July twenty-fourth. We anticipate bringing it to City Council to vote on the recommended projects with an anticipated begin date or issuances of notices to proceed on August thirty-first. Again, the application period will be open between the period of July thirteenth and July twenty-fourth. Applications will be completed and submitted online. They will be accessible via the Community Reinvestment page, Facebook, as well as other social media outlets, and they are due July twenty-fourth at eleven fifty-nine p.m. For more information, you can reach out to our office. Our telephone number is seven zero six two two five four six one three, and you can email us and visit the website for updates on how we plan on implementing.
So, Mayor and Council, just again, these are dollars in addition to the normal entitlement allocation. These are additional dollars as a result of COVID-19 coronavirus, and so, this is how those dollars would be administered. Any questions of Ms. Rob Scott?
Just a comment.
Counselor Hough?
Welcome, I get to see you in person.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate you. Thank you for the update. I'll give you a call later today, a couple ideas I have, not concerning this, but just in general.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And so, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, someone just texted me and asked the question, how do I get the CDBG webinar for CARES funding? And can we answer that?
Yes. It will be, the webinar, link to the webinar will be on the Facebook page, as well as will be published on the Community Reinvestment page on the city's website.
Okay, so would you repeat that one, just one more time?
Absolutely. The link for the webinar will be located on the city's page for the Community Reinvestment Department, as well as the Facebook page.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Scott. Thank you for being here.
And so, next, we've got the CARES Act update, Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin.
Thank you. Okay, we have been working diligently for the last few months on the CARES Act. What is it? It's the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. That's what you have been hearing so much about, and we have been making sure that we are a part of this. The intent of the CARES Act is to, first of all, it was passed in March of this year, March the twenty-seventh, and it's two trillion dollars relief package that intends to protect the American people from the public health and economic impact of COVID-19. That's the purpose of that funding. We have been working with the Georgia Municipal Association, the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, and the National League of Cities in responding to their surveys that they have asked us for, and they have been doing that over the last few months, just trying to determine what our current expenses are related to COVID-19, as they work with Congress and the Treasury Department to determine what the city's expenses throughout Georgia look like. And so, we have certainly provided them our information. But Georgia received just over four billion dollars of CARES Act funding. Six hundred and fourteen million of that goes to four counties within Georgia, Cobb, DeKalb, Fulton, and Gwinnett, and the City of Atlanta. So, they received six hundred and fourteen million of that. Three point five billion is available for the remainder of the states in Georgia. Some of the eligible expenses regarding COVID-19 include medical, and that, any medical expenses in terms of public agencies, hospitals, clinics, the Department of Health, any of those medical facilities is an eligible expense, public health expenses, payroll in public health, provisional provisions of economic support, hazard pay, although we didn't do hazard pay, we did do hazard time, which actually, there is a dollar amount associated with that time that we've given, so it will become an eligible expense. Supplies for future preparation and stockpiling of what we may need for the future outbreak in the current, what's going on currently with COVID-19. Also, emergency financial assistance to pay rent, mortgage, funerals, and et cetera. And those are things that, of course, all the funding has to come through the government. And so, what we are looking to do is to gather up all of those expenses within those, our partner agencies within the city. What we have done, and we've asked every department within CCG and agency to provide us with their expenses related to COVID, from, you know, facilities maintenance and providing all of the sanitation equipment, all departments, of course, have purchased face masks, they have done shields at the various offices, the six-foot distancing signs, and a whole, a number of other things that they have done. Expenses have been pretty great here, and so, we've received all of that from March through, and we've asked them to anticipate what those expenses will be through December thirty-one of this year. And so, we are also, again, we had a team working and actually receiving information also from the healthcare agencies outside, of course, the city. And so, we've received some of those and we continue to receive them. But five hundred and thirty-eight cities and one hundred and fifty-nine counties will receive direct funding from the CARES Act. We have provided them with all of our banking information that will allow us to receive a direct deposit before June the thirtieth, and that is based on the per capita or population basis for Phase One. All cities will receive direct funding based on the per capita population, again, and that, they will receive that prior to June the thirtieth, and so, we should be getting something very soon. There's no other action that is required on our part for this Phase One funding. Under Phase Two and Three, which are the next steps... Under Phase Two and Three, which are the next steps, according, according to the guidance that we currently have, through October 31st, we will, of course, have to provide our eligible expenses that have been made from March 1st through October 30th for reimbursement. Under Phase Three, again, those, that available funding will be based on reimbursement through December 31st, and any funding that is remaining after the final allocation and that is not used must be returned to the state. So, we have really been tracking and working this, but there's a lot more work to be done. And so, what the consideration is at this point is that the city manager actually hires a dedicated organization or individual to manage the CARES Act process for the next six months or so, just to ensure that we are able to get everything that is due to Columbus, Muskogee County. This includes, again, that individual or that organization, meeting with our community partners to receive their expenses and to know what they're doing. This is from, I mean, nonprofits and whomever that actually have any kind of COVID-19-related expenses. So, we've got to have someone who's dedicated just to that cause, not someone who spends 1% or 2% of their time working it, because too much money is on the table for our community, for us not to have someone directly responsible for that task, and this ensures that our community is fully covered for any of those eligible expenses. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Question. Deputy City Manager, I have a good job on the presentation. I just, I mean, this is, this is critical, and I think the way y'all are handling it, trying to hire somebody who's going to be focused full-time on getting it done is the proper way to move. I know they still haven't come up with any guidelines, they've talked in generalizations, as we've seen, but the two primary advocates for local governments throughout the state of Georgia are hard at work with the Governor's Office and his Budget Committee, trying to make sure that they have everything laid out as neatly as possible, and they're going to have to make something happen pretty quick.
That's right.
If they're going to stick to those guidelines, so, but it's going to be a great opportunity, I think, for so many organizations that are, certainly for the government, for some of the monies that we've expended, but as you pointed out, so many other industries and sectors within our community, I think, stand in benefit as well.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Question.
Question.
Yes, sir, Counselor. Thank you, Mayor. Do we think we'll be able to cover expenses for facilities that we know have, have had a revenue shortfall because of canceled events like the Civic Center or anything like that?
Well, again, based on the guidance that we have at this point, it's in discussion, but nothing is, nothing is finalized in terms of revenue replacement, but that is certainly something that is being discussed.
Okay, thank you.
And so far, they haven't really had a lot of luck on revenue replacement for governments, but yet they've expanded a little bit to perhaps helping to fill some gaps for private individuals and for businesses, so it's, it's a fluid situation as they continue to work through it.
Question.
Counselor.
How does that affect us budget-wise going down the road?
In terms of the budget, I'll ask our Finance Director to
I guess my direct
Yeah, to respond to that.
Yeah, my direct thought process is just asking as far as where we are right now. Moving ahead, we'll meet again, I guess, in September, so if we take this thing, how does it affect us as far as budget?
Good morning. So, the CARES Act funding is a reimbursement-type program, so we would have to expend the funding in order to receive reimbursements. That, that certainly is a part of the process that's being discussed, is the reimbursement aspect, because there's, and I believe the Deputy City Manager mentioned certain phases that they're looking to install in terms of how they allocate the funding to the local governments. The first phase, actually, though, is, and as the Mayor mentioned, they sort of haven't drilled down to a finite number, they'll give the money sort of upfront to the local governments, and so we'll have that money to utilize if, and supposedly, that money should be available to us, what we've been told is by the end of this fiscal year, so by June 30th, whatever that allocation would be, we're expecting some allocation, hopefully, from the state government, to use that money upfront, and then we'll just have to document all of the expenditures for the use of that funding, and then, and in the additional phases, it will be on a reimbursement basis.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. That's, that June 30th date is what prompted the question going into July 1. Thank you.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I want to stress that, you know, it's kind of scary getting money in advance, and then you go and you spend it, and then some auditor comes in and says, you know, well, that's not justified, and you got to pay it back. That's one of the reasons we think we need a person or an agency looking at this every hour, every day, because we can't afford not to utilize the funding on certain things, and then we learn after it's all over that other cities or counties did use it and we left millions on the table. And so, we just got to be methodical and deliberate, and we got to make sure, and then, and see, if you don't spend the money, it goes back into the state, and then they redistribute the money to areas that need or did spend the money. And so, do we want to be so careful not to spend money on things that perhaps could have been spent on, and we turn the money back in and it goes to Savannah, Augusta, or somewhere else, and we realize, oops, well, I think the position, a position our agency for six months will pay for itself if they become an expert, and, and we don't want to be left having to pay money back, but we don't want to be left with millions of dollars on the table that we should have claimed. So, we just got to figure out the balance and all of that.
Yeah, there'll be a lot of, a lot of discussions. I know DCA, Department of Community Affairs, is going to be sort of the watchdog of this. They're going to be gathering receipts and telling you what kind of paperwork you need to provide, so it's going to be, it's either going to take somebody away from their full-time job, or we need to get somebody temporarily to do it full-time, and I think that makes, I mean, obviously, that would be an expense that would be allowable, I would think, underneath these guidelines anyway, so I think that's the way to go to make sure, because it is going to be a delicate operation in that you don't want to, you don't want to leave anything on the table, as the City Manager said, but you don't want to overstretch either and end up having to pay some of it back.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I just have a couple of curious questions. Just want to standpoint accounting and balance sheet and all, I know there's, the stimulus funds are, we've heard several presentations, and they're going in different directions. What, what, what fund will those go into and how will they be accounted for, and will we get periodic statements on how the money is being plowed and used?
That is an excellent question, Counselor Davis. Still working out all of the specific details, but the thought is that it would go into its own fund, we would establish a segregated fund so that we can report on the expenditures that we utilize under the CARES Act sort of separately, so it won't be wrapped up in the expenditures or any other fund. We'll, we'll look to establish a separate fund.
Establish a separate fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, then you'll, you can do all the ledger and accounting activity outside that fund?
Yes, sir.
Within that fund and outside the fund, from a
Yes, and we'll report, provide reports to council based on that fund activity.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
There are no other questions, we will move on to the next topic, Tax Assessors Public Access Update. Suzanne Whitehouse.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Council. So, public access got wiped out by the ransomware attack, and actually, a lot of what we have in our office got wiped out, and so we have been diligently working to reestablish everything. We have an interim public access site up and running as of the 19th, so last week. It is not full functionality that we're used to, so there's, there's a few features that are still missing off of the, off of the public access site. It's not linking to the maps yet, the photos are not there, and there are some search features that we had had available on the other public access sites, such as neighborhood search and that kind of thing, that are, that are not available. But all of the information for valuations for 2020 that went out in notices of assessment are in fact available out on the public access site, and it can be searched. So, if you know what your neighbors' houses are or their addresses, you can look them up and see what their values are. We do not have an estimate yet on when we will be able to get the old, the public access site that we're used to, we don't have an estimate yet on when that rebuild will be complete, we are still working on it with Tyler and with IT, and it's, you know, we have to, they have to complete the build, and then we have to test it before we can release it, so we do not have an estimate yet on when that will be available. One of the things that we have potential for is to bring along a secondary site, so that we have our public access site, but then we would have a secondary site that would complement the public access site. In the past, we had used a company called Q Public, and it's one that Realtors are very familiar with. It's used in 154 counties here in the state of Georgia, and they have a sole source, no dollar to us option available, which we have explored, and it's, they would host it, it would not be hosted on our servers, it would be hosted on their servers, which would provide a little bit of protection, so if we ever got hit again. And they would not be charging the CCG, the cost to host the site would be borne by them, they make up some of the expense by selling subscriptions to it, number of different subscriptions We are not, there's a number of other counties that are on Tyler, which is what we have for our campus system, that also use Q Public as opposed to public access, or that use both. And just as an example, you can go out to the DeKalb County site, and that is the Q Public site, they're a Tyler company, they use IS World, they're Tyler County. Cobb County is another one, Baldwin is another one, all of them are on the same campus system we are, and they're all using the Q Public site, and so they, the integration between Q Public and IS World has already been defined, it's seamless, so they, it would, it would flow very nicely, it would work very well. We would still have the public access site as a totally free option for our taxpayers, but for those professionals that like to have additional features, additional searchability, to have Esri integrated maps, that, that sort of thing, the Q Public could potentially be an option for that. And we're hoping to actually bring that before council here in a couple of weeks for, for your approval. And so, that's sort of the, the public access update.
Suzanne, if you would, excuse me, I'm sorry, could you give a quick update, just a brief update on where we are with the, the whole assessment process, because I know there were some people who were concerned about
I was just, I was just getting ready to
I'm sorry. I jumped the gun, I apologize.
That was, that was the next slide on the table.
All right, sorry, I'll, I'll let you get to it.
Not a problem. So, where we are is, we are now in the appeal process. Notices of assessment for personal property, which is businesses, boats, airplanes, were mailed out on the 15th of May. The appeal period for personal property is going to expire on the 29th of June, and for real property, which is buildings and land, that, those notices went out May 18th, and their appeal period will expire July 2nd. The legislature allows for a 45-day appeal period from the date of mailing of the notices, that's why there's two different deadlines on the appeal deadlines, because it is a 45-day period. To date, we have 388 appeals, that was as of 5:00 yesterday afternoon, nine in personal property, and for real property, we are currently at a total of 379, 293 of which are residential, 86 are commercial, and current value in dispute is approximately just over $26 million, which represents less than a half of a percent of the total digest. These numbers are a little low, but not much for this, where we are within the appeal period. The last week of the appeal period is always our big crunch, and then, because they have the right to mail them in, as long as they are postmarked by the final date of the appeal period, the first week after the appeal period expires, we always, that's when we see all of the, all of the mail come rolling in. Generally, the tax reps, businesses, they all file their appeals, if not the last date, then the day before the last date, or they will postmark them the last date of the appeal period. So, our numbers always reflect low until we hit that last week. So, we are in seven days today for personal property. We would expect to only have somewhere in the neighborhood of about 20 personal property appeals total, which would be normal for the year. We don't generally get a whole lot of personal property appeals. Real property, we're at about 400, normal for us is somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,100 to 1,200 appeals per year. So, we would expect to see those numbers going up, and we are seeing those numbers going up. Between Friday and, and yesterday, we brought in little over 100 appeals, which is, which is normal. I mean, this is, this is exactly, doing exactly what it did last year, and it's exactly what we expect. So, my staff has been available to assist folks, you know, that needed help researching to decide whether they wanted to appeal or not, for those people who are used to going out to the public access site and they weren't able to, my staff was, was absolutely available. We were answering phones, helping people that came in the door in order to answer any questions that they had, we assisted them with research, you know, to, to help them determine, you know, if their neighbors' houses were valued the same as theirs, or, you know, where businesses were, that kind of thing. So, we have had an increased number of phone calls in the last, you know, couple of weeks while public access site has been down, but, but we've been able to, to take care of the customers that way. Questions?
You're good.
Okay, Mayor, if there are no other questions on that topic, we do have one other topic for the tax assessor that Finance Director will introduce, and then she will introduce after the tax assessor, a topic on Commissioner, a tax commissioner, and then the sheriff's office, and then she will do the finance update. So, the mic is yours through the end of my agenda.
Right, thank you. So, as the City Manager mentioned, the second update for the tax assessor's office is pursuant to ordinance 13-39, which says that if a department or elected official anticipates exceeding their appropriate budget appropriations, they have to come before this council and request additional funding. So, for the tax assessor's office, that amount is, amounts to about an estimated $5,000. There was some additional, or the re-establishment of continuing education within the tax assessor's office that required her to potentially exceed her budgeted funds, as well as some additional cell phone expenses that during an audit by the Information Technology Department were being charged to the inappropriate, inappropriate budget, and it should have been charged to the tax assessor's office, and so these things will need, request an additional $5,000 through the end of FY '20, and obviously And obviously, consider how we'll cover those in FY21 with the tax commissioners, I mean, I'm sorry, the tax assessor's office, you know, reallocating line item budgets to avoid any overages.
So state your request here today.
The request is for an additional $5,000.
For the tax assessor's office?
For the tax assessor's office.
For what?
To cover the additional training expenses that were necessary for the tax assessor's office to remain certified. And if Suzanne wants to talk more about that, there was some lacking in the area of continuing education for the appraisers in the office.
Okay. And where would the $5,000 come from to approve it today?
At this particular point, it would be fund balance reserves.
Okay. And so Mayor and Council, that is the request today, $5,000.
So there is a request from the tax assessor for a motion to allow $5,000 to come out of the general fund reserve to cover the overage. We got a motion approved. We got a question from Councilor Craft.
So this is training, this is for training?
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't they have known in advance that this training was necessary?
What I have discovered is that there has been a consistent pattern of allowing appraisers' CE to lapse and then picking them up the next year as the budget came due. And I went ahead and made sure that everybody got current. So we are now current, and we will stay current instead of having this lapse continue year after year after year, where instead of getting people current and then moving forward so that the next year we weren't paying catch-up again, that's what they've been doing. I discovered that when I came on board, that we had appraisers that were lapsed and that the next fiscal year, they would let them catch-up and somebody else would lapse. And then the next fiscal year, that person would get caught up. And so we just went ahead and got everybody caught up. We also have a couple of new assessors on the board. Only have three new assessors that are still trying to reach their required credentials. They're required to have four classes. And we have, with new staff, we had some turnover that we had to get certified.
So are they, are these the Real Estate Commission Appraisers licenses that are lapsing?
No, we don't.
Are you guys in a different realm?
It's a different realm. We're not Gray App, which is Georgia Real Estate, Georgia Real Estate Appraisers Board, where this is Department of Revenue required certifications.
So is it different that they can still continue to do their job even when their license is lapsed?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
As long as we get recertified within a grace period.
Okay.
We do have a motion to approve from the Mayor pro temp. Is there a second? Councilor House has seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? It's approved. Thank you, ma'am.
So the next item on the agenda is for the tax commissioner's office. This is not pursuant to ordinance 13-39, in which the tax commissioner is asking for additional appropriations. This request is actually pursuant to the FY20 budget ordinance that says if a department or elected official wants to utilize spending, any salary savings, that they have to come before council to get express approval. And the request is to cover the, or reimburse the tax commissioner's office for some bank analysis fees. This is in response to the FY19 audit that was brought before council and presented by our external auditors, Maltese and Jenkins. There was a recommendation for a change in process. And so going forward, they've changed that process for FY21 going forward, but there is a reimbursement requirement to reimburse the tax commissioner's bank account for bank analysis fees in the amount of $26,117. Again, this is not utilizing fund balance reserves. It is already within the tax commissioner's budget. It is just utilizing some salary savings. So we're reallocating monies to cover this expense. We need council's approval.
So we need approval to use salary savings within the existing budget to cover the $26,000, Mr. Mayor?
All right. It's a pleasure, Council. Repeat what you said, particularly the last part, I think, to Mr. City Manager.
Well, I was saying that this is an expense that can be covered through salary savings that she has in her budget as an elected official constitutional officer to cover this expense, and we're just asking you to approve, allow and such.
The number was 26,000?
26,000, yes.
26,117.
26,117.
Seventeen dollars.
Twenty-six, one-seventeen.
I'm sorry.
There's a motion to approve. Councilor Craft?
I'm sorry. Can you clarify what the expense was?
So just as any private business or commercial business, when we utilize financial institutions, typically the utilization of those institutions, there's a fee involved. A lot of, and particularly, I know for the city's contract, what they'll do is they will reduce the balance in our checking account for the fees that we have due. So they charge us for various things. There are fees to make deposits. There's fees to, you know, write checks against the account. I mean, there's a schedule of fees that the city and any other, you know, business typically are responsible for. And so at the end of each month or each quarter, just really depending on the banking institution, these fees, they will send you a notice of what those fees are for that particular time period, and then they'll make a reduction to your bank balance for that. Now, for the tax commissioner's office, you know, that's not money that's hers to keep. The money that she collects from the citizens for real personal taxes, that money is dispersed out to either the school district or to the city or some other taxing agency, such as, you know, the BID as well. And so those fees that she's paying is essentially, she's essentially sending money to us, giving money to us that we're not really, that we're due, but it has to be reimbursed back into the account because that money has been taken from the bank. So that's essentially what we're doing in this particular case, is putting the money back into the account, restoring the balance in the account, because it really acts as a pass-through for her to disperse the money to the various agencies.
So she's collecting all this money, whether it's for us or the school district, whomever, and she transfers this money over to the city because she has her, their account. And this $26,000 got transferred along with that. And so now it's, we need to give it back?
We need to put the money back in the account. I mean, she's essentially paid us out monies that she really didn't have because the bank took it. It's an expense to us. And it operates that way for all the different courts, or most of the courts. I know specifically from municipal magistrate court, when you have a pass-through account, there is no money in that account to cover a fee. So that fee has to be charged against a budget.
So in layman's terms, if the bank charges for checking account $10 a month for the account if your balance is below whatever, is that an example? And so there's a fee. And so that fee is going to come out of whatever monies you have in the bank, that $10.
Right.
And so, and so if you transfer the $500 you have in your checking account and you don't leave $10 in there to cover, then there's an issue with your account.
That's right.
So we got the $500. We're going to give the $10 back.
Right.
So that you'll have your bank fees. That's-
Okay. I'm not used to working with the numbers you're working with. And so is this, is this really, you know, a realistic number of the fees that are charged to us?
This is for a period of time. No, this number is not. This number is not an annual number.
Because what I'm wondering is maybe we need to look, if this is out of whack a little bit for fees, which it seems excessive to me, but I don't work with the level of numbers that you're working with.
This is over several years.
Maybe it's not excessive. But it seems like, have we looked this over to see if there's a way to reduce these fees?
And we do have negotiations with the bank, and I know the tax commissioner in her official capacity as a constitutional officer, have negotiations with banks to revisit the fees. And I actually believe that there was talk or switching of accounts within the office to help reduce some of the fees. But this number is not an annual number. The fees are nowhere near this amount on an annual basis. This is, as I said, a result of the FY19 audit, and it's just a culmination of time, this amount here. So it's not the amount that we anticipate going forward, nowhere near this amount. We don't even pay this amount in terms of the fees.
Have we tried to negotiate with the bank on this amount?
Well, the fees have already been taken.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay. We've got a motion to approve. And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? It's approved.
Okay. And next, Mr. Mayor, we've got Finance Director's going to talk about the sheriff's office, and the sheriff is here.
And before I do that, Councilor House did ask for additional information. It's not listed specifically on the agenda because it was a referral, but he requested additional information for Bull Creek Golf Course as well as the Civic Center. And so you have before you a handout for the estimated cash flows for both of those enterprise funds. And if I could just very quickly, looking at the Bull Creek estimated cash flow, so what we anticipate through the end of June are revenues that amount to a little bit more than $100,000. And this includes the already budgeted subsidy from the general fund in the amount of $50,000. The estimated expenses are listed here through the end of the month for payroll expenses, inmate labor, landscaping supplies, utilities, the equipment rental, operating materials, and so forth. And so when you subtract all of those expenses from what we anticipate we'll receive in revenue through the end of the month, that leaves a deficit of about $39,000. Currently on the books, they have a deficit of $86,000, which is what prompted our request to counsel for the $125,000 needed for Bull Creek to cover the cash deficit at the end of the fiscal year. And one thing I'd like to say about this as well is that, you know, obviously, this request, and keeping in line with ordinance 13-39, is, you know, obviously very important to me. It's obviously very important to council so that when departments are, or elected officers are operating with the deficit, they come back here and request additional appropriations. But in accordance with state law and in terms of the accounting requirements, we cannot have to, we cannot leave a fund, an enterprise fund or any other fund with a cash deficit on the books as of June 30. And we are required, the general fund is required to cover all deficits as of June 30 in accordance with state law. And so that is the detail for the golf courses, and I've also provided that for the Civic Center with that request of being approximately $600,000.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, those were presented to you at the last meeting. We told you we would bring them back to you today with explanation, additional information, and we will need action on Bull Creek and on Civic Center.
All right. Motion approved from Councilor Huff and seconded by Councilor House. Any other discussion on the, and this is for both Bull Creek and for the Civic Center? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any further discussion on either one? All in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, they're approved.
Thank you. And so last departmental elected office update would be for the sheriff's office. So I've also provided just a quick handout to council concerning the current budget balance for the sheriff's office, as well as some estimated expenses through the end of June. And in light of this new information concerning the outstanding obligations for the sheriff's office, we thought it was prudent to bring this new information back to council since just a few meetings ago, council approved the sheriff, the use of salary savings to pay out bonuses within her office. And at this particular point, we would need direction from council in terms of those bonuses, payment of those bonuses, because at this particular point in time, if we proceed with the bonuses, we anticipate an overrun in the sheriff's office, and that would require additional appropriations to be approved by city council.
And so Mayor and Council, when this came before you, I believe it was on the 9th of the month, the understanding at that time was that the sheriff office was going to be within budget and they had salary savings. And based on that information, you approved proceeding forward with bonuses out of the salary savings. And of course, had we known at that time that the sheriff office would not be within budget and wanted to use salary savings that would cause the sheriff's office to exceed budget, we would have spoken up at that time and not recommended any approval of paying out bonuses in a budget where you're going to exceed your bottom line. And so as city manager, unless there's different information, and this is certainly what I would do for any department with a similar circumstance, I would come back to you and say to you that certainly I would not have recommended on June 9th, and certainly I don't recommend proceeding with paying bonuses that would cause a department to exceed bottom line. And so it would be my recommendation, with that being the case, that you reconsider and not pay out bonuses unless we get some different information from the sheriff today. Because we cannot, should not, I do not recommend paying bonuses that would cause any department to exceed his bottom line. And so that is what I have to share with you today.
Any questions? Councilor Davis?
Yeah, if what you're saying is accurate, I'd say we can't do it. It's just not fair to anybody in this government. We'd have to do it for everybody. I mean, that's the way I would approach it. And that's not the understanding, how it was presented, and certainly it's not going by the guidelines that this council has upheld with other departments and agencies. So I agree 100%. I just, it would be totally disrespectful and just the wrong thing to do in looking at the rest of the employees of this government.
Well, I think the sheriff was operating on information she had at that time, and we were operating on the information that was being shared with us at that time. And I don't think there was any effort to- And I don't think there was any effort to, um, to do what we find, where we find ourselves. I don't think she would've asked had she known and been clear.
A- and you're right, that's not, that's not, certainly I'm not saying that.
Yeah, sure.
Because I think we had that discussion, and it was consistent with what we've done.
Yes.
With other departments. This would be out of.
Yes, that's right.
The norm. That's why, I'm just giving my two cents behind it, why I couldn't support something like this if it was.
Yes.
In a, in addition, or actually increasing the budget of a office. We'd have to do it for everybody else. That's really the bottom line.
Well, the bottom line, I think you're right, we would have other, you would set a precedent. If you didn't know it, it would be one thing, but to know it before you do it is something else, because I can see next year, a constable officer who is going to exceed his or her budget may come and say, "I wanna pay bonuses with salary savings." Well, you did it last year. And, and that just would not be a good practice.
Is the budgetary shortfall, does that eat up all of the salary savings?
It does.
It does?
It does.
Okay. Well, unfortunately I agree. I think it's just one of those deals where information came in a little late, and the Sheriff didn't get, have that when she first appeared, and, uh, but it would be a, it would be a, an improper precedent set, I think. Just my opinion. Any other comments from council? Council Crab?
Is there an action that we should be taking on that?
Yes, because you voted to approve it on June 9th, and, um, and I'd have to defer to the City Attorney to see how you would undo it.
City Attorney?
Mayor, um, you would just have to take, uh, up a motion to rescind the previous action, in effect, amending that provision that was adopted two weeks ago.
Motion, uh, by Mayor Protem to rescind and seconded by Council Crab. Uh, any discussion? Councilor House?
Could the Finance Director or the Sheriff re- remind us exactly what that was on 9 June? What was that bonus? Who got how much money?
I believe it was $300 to the sworn officers and 150 to the civilians.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Can I say something, uh, Council?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, Council? Um, when I was, when I made this request, I was looking at the variance report, the latest one that we had, and we were well within our budget. I got a variance report Friday, we're still well within our budget. But I understand that this now, with this new information, and I do wanna say this, I think that one of the things that happened is we had approximately $123,000 that was not budgeted in outside medical expenses, medical care for inmates. We have an additional $25,000 that has come out that we will have to pay medical care for inmates. So I think that ate up quite a bit of that, obviously, that, that was not foreseen when, when I was looking, and when all of us, because I didn't do this in a vacuum. I did get with the, uh, Finance Director before I even made the request, and we were all looking at the same information at that time. So, um, uh, I, I am very sorry for my people though, because I, I hate to, to say that I, I came here and asked for it, it was approved, and now I'm afraid we're not gonna be able to do it, but, uh, but I certainly understand , uh, the financial responsibility of the council and the mayor. Appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am. Any, any further discussion, question? Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor Protem, um, the City Manager or Finance Director, have, have any of the funds been dispersed?
No.
No.
No one's been paid yet? Okay, thank you. All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, it's rescinded.
And so Mayor, the final item on my agenda is the finance update by the Finance Director. Well, and then I do have one add-on. Deputy City Manager Hodge would just like to quickly tell you about the Virginia College.
Okay. Thanks Sheriff.
Um, so, um, what you have before you, um, should be the financial sl- snapshot for May 2020. So just starting at the right side of the snapshot when comparing, um, May 2020 to May 2019, the General Fund is up 9.89%. Um, that is largely due to the, um, increases that we experienced in our title of alarm taxes. As of May 2019, we'd only collected about 149,000, whereas in, as of May, um, of 2020, we've recorded about 7.4 million, um, in title of alarm taxes in the General Fund. And as, um, I've stated previously, um, the restructuring of the title of alarm taxes, um, in terms of how, uh, with the tru- with the state discontinuing the true-up, um, some of the tax-supported funds that are listed here on the snapshot that I'll get to in just a moment, they're experiencing decreases because of that change. Um, so it's a positive impact for the General Fund, not so positive for the other tax-supported funds, um, that, um, used to receive a significant amount of motor vehicle, um, abhorrent taxes. So the other local option sales tax fund, um, year-to-date is up, um, 2.34%. Um, when we compare May of 2019 to May 2020, um, we're actually downing our collections, uh, 12%. Uh, we're making that comparison, but, uh, year-to-date, it's up 2.34%, and, um, I would attribute that to the very early on, uh, the gains that we saw very early on in the fiscal year. Um, I do anticipate and very hopeful that we'll, um, obviously meet our budget, um, but, you know, that all just depends on what happens in June, so. Um, the Stormwater Sewer Fund is down 4.40%, um, the Paving Fund is down 4.09%. Uh, Medical Center Fund, also tax-supported, is down 3.78%. The Integrated Waste Fund is down 9.69%, and that actually is, um, due to a timing issue. Um, we did not receive, uh, the, um, um, residential collections, um, at the same period this year that we did last year. Had that been received and posted timely, that fund would only be down about, um, 0.97%. So, um, the, uh, Emergency Telephone Fund is up 5.35%. The Economic Development Authority Fund is down 3.78%. Um, Debt Service Fund, um, is up 50.51%, and again, that is due to the bond refundings, um, and the proceeds related to that, um, that has that fund, um, with a significant change for this year. Next year it'll be just the opposite, so don't be surprised when you hear me give that same explanation next year about the Debt Service Fund. Um, the Transportation Fund is up 15.95%. On the Trade Center Fund is down 15.47%. Uh, Bull Creek Golf Course Fund, down 16.39%. And, um, I know for Bull Creek, uh, some of that is based on, um, the fact that some of the revenues that, um, were for, for May or actually not posted until June, so, um, it still would be down, but not at, um, the level in which you see on the report. Um, Oxco Creek Golf Course, um, is the same, it's down 21.64%. And the Civic Center Fund, year-to-date is down 4.32%. Moving down the snapshot for the older local option sales tax, uh, fund, public safety summary, the revenues that we've collected year-to-date in, um, OLOS is 22.1 million. Um, expenditures or obligations year-to-date is 22.4 million. Uh, for the infrastructure side, the revenues reported year-to-date is 9.4 million. Expenditures, um, running out about, uh, 10.1 million. Moving to the, um, left side of the snapshot, um, just for, um, the, um, just to point out here, the General Fund budget, our total revenues, um, year-to-date amounts to about 95.64%. Um, so we're very close to meeting our budget in terms of our revenue collections in the General Fund this fiscal year. On the expenditure side, when we move down the snapshot to the General Fund expenditures, our goal at this particular point in time is to have a budget that either meets or exceeds 8.33%. And so for the departments that are listed here that are not meeting that goal, they're highlighted in yellow. Um, so the first one would be the City Attorney's litigation, um, we're still defending several million in claims, obviously. Um, the real estate budget, um, that is related to the building maintenance and repairs of the legacy tower, I mean, um, legacy terrace, sorry, um, there is a revenue, um, that offsets, um, those expenditures. Um, and then the, um, Public Defender's Office, um, we pay that monthly contract in advance, so, um, we've actually made the payment for June already for that particular contract. And the contract for FY21 will be on the next council agenda. So that is the finance update in a nutshell, and I'll take any questions from council if you have them.
Any questions of the, uh, Finance Director? Ms. Alexander, thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy City Manager Hodge?
Uh, yes, sir. So, um, there were some questions at the last meeting, uh, about the Health Department and the services that were going to be provided. I just wanted to give a quick update on what services will be moving, uh, to the new location at 5601 Veterans Parkway, and this will be effective July 1st. Uh, those departments that are scheduled to move include, uh, Public Health, Vital Records, uh, Dental Clinic, the WIC Office, uh, District Child Health, uh, Prevention Services, and the District Clinical Offices. So all of those offices that are currently located at 2100 Comer Avenue will be moving to the new facility, 5601 Veterans Parkway, uh, effective July 1st. Uh, they'll still limit the number of people entering the facility due to COVID-19. Uh, no one will be turned away. Uh, everyone will be screened in the front lobby, uh, just as they're doing at their current location. Uh, where feasible, they are using, uh, telehealth, online, uh, and drive-through services. Uh, departments with specific, uh, clients have already contacted those clients specifically, so they're aware of the change of the location. Uh, they will continue to do the drive-through COVID-19, uh, collection at the current location, uh, at 2100 Comer Avenue, so that, uh, drive-through, uh, COVID-19 testing will continue at 2100, uh, Comer. Just wanted to give that quick update, uh, for those who utilize those services, so they know, uh, the new location will be effective July 1st.
Okay. We probably oughta, I guess, are we running those on, uh, CCG TV? Just letting folks know over the next 30 days what's moved?
We'll get something, uh, formal from them, and we'll put that on CCG TV.
Quick question?
Yes, sir.
Can you run through that one more time? Who's moving?
Uh, the offices that are moving includes, uh, the Physical Health, Vital Records, uh, Dental Clinic, WIC Offices, District Child Health, Prevention Services, and District Clinicals. So all of those clinical services will be at the new location. Uh, the services related to typically businesses, um, will remain at 2100 Comer Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or any, anything from the City Manager before we leave his agenda? All right, Madam Clerk?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the Clerk's agenda, item number one is a resolution, council in the July 7th proclamation session.
Is motion approved or second?
Second. I'll move for approval of one, two, three, and four, which are e- excusing, uh, councilors from meetings as well.
Okay, and, uh, we've got a motion.
Mr. Mayor, could please just complete the vote for number one?
Need to vote on number one first? Okay.
Yes.
So we'll call the question on number one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, and I, I'm gonna look to the City Attorney, but I, I think we need some clear direction as to whether we're gonna continue to meet here through the month of July. Certainly with all this going on with numbers and all, we, we just, I guess we need to make it clear to the public and for the record.
Yeah, I've, uh, that's good, that's, that's a good idea to get, to get the City Attorney to weigh in. I tell you, my personal opinion, I think it's too soon for us to go back in those council chambers. I think it's, uh, as long as we can make this functional, as long as it meets the requirements, uh, of the law, then I think, I think it's just a safer environment here for the visitors and for the councilors.
Yes, Mayor, it is certainly your discretion, uh, whether to stay here or not. The governor's emergency orders, as you know, will end, uh, this month, really, the beginning of July. And there has been a, an extension of the judicial declaration of emergency all the way through, um, July and maybe into August, but it's your discretion, uh, you certainly can take into account all the health factors of the week that are pertinent and relevant. And, uh, it's certainly, uh, your prerogative to stay here for a while until you have more information.
Well, I'd be interested in hearing council's opinion, but I just, I think it's a safer environment. I, I don't know, is there a significant, uh, cost adjustment to meeting here versus our?
Uh, there, there is a cost adjustment, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I mean, a cost. But, but what I have done, and I don't know when our equipment is going to get here, but we have ordered our own equipment, because we can, and so we will be, right now we're using a private vendor to, and their equipment, uh, but we will have our own and be able to do it going into the future, and it will be one of our COVID-19 expenses, the cost of purchase of the equipment, um.
But there'll be a cost recovery?
There'll be a cost recovery, I should say, and so I thought it would make sense to buy the equipment to, as a COVID expense to keep it safe, keep us safe and the public safe. And, uh, so, the expense should start, go away soon? Soon, as, as soon as I, we've already ordered the equipment several weeks ago. And so, uh, we, we do anticipate receiving our own sometime soon.
All right, Council Crab?
Isn't Nancy Bourne using the council chambers for voting and registration?
Uh, the Deputy City Manager said no.
Oh, she's not. Okay, I thought she was. Okay, thanks.
Mayor Protem? Thank you. Mr. City Manager, uh, I'm sure you considered a wide variety of places to meet when you were looking at moving out of the council chambers. Was any consideration given to the, uh, Trade Center as a location? I was thinking about the parking garage for the public or that kind of scenario.
Well, we, uh, did not, because, um, we have direct control, obviously, of the Civic Center through the Deputy City Manager and through you, the Mayor and Council. And we knew that this would provide us a much larger space to spread out. And as you can see in the cheers, and so we thought, I mean, the Trade Center has a larger ballroom. I, we, you know, but we just didn't, we, we don't have the control there that we have here.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments, one way or the other?
Mr. Mayor, we did want to take up the motion and second to approve two through four.
Okay.
The other resolutions.
We did jump off of that, didn't we? Thank you for keeping me straight. We do have a motion and second for resolutions two through four, um, excusing Council Barnes from the 16th meeting, Council Huff from the 16th meeting, and, uh, uh, Council Thomas from the 16th meeting. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion that the minutes be received, and it is a second. Uh, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, let's go back to the Civic Center. I guess will we need a, a vote on that to continue to meet here? Or can we just administer?
I, I think that would be good for the record, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody wish to make a motion that we continue to meet in July? There's a motion from the Mayor Protem, is her second? There's a second by, uh, who's that? Council Huff? Okay, uh, any, any other discussion on the location? All in favor, please say aye. All right, any opposed? All right, we'll meet at least through the month of July in the Civic Center. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Next, we have board appointments. Mr. Mayor, we have appointments for you for the Commission and International Relations and Cultural Liaison Encounters. Uh, you are nominating Merrill Russian for the seat of Merlina Salamaka, and she may be confirmed.
So motion second, confirm. Uh, Ms. Russian, any, uh, discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed.
For the Commission and Visitors Board of Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, you are renominating Mamie Pound to certain other term.
Yeah, I'm gonna renominate Ms. Pound, and, um, uh, I've got two nominees, but I, I just haven't confirmed that one of these existing individuals is, uh, leaving so.
We will bring those back for the next meeting, Mr. Mayor, those appointments. Um, but do we have a motion to? Uh, do we have a motion to confirm Mamie Pound?
Motion second to confirm Ms. Pound. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Next, we have Counsel appointments that are ready for confirmation. For the Planning Advisory Commission, Ms. Gloria Thomas was nominated to succeed Mr. Michael Greenblatt, and he may, she may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor, who made the motion and second?
Uh, Counsel Barnes made the motion, and Mayor Protem made the second.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed.
For the Retirees Health Benefits Committee, Ms. Renee McEnany was nominated to succeed Mr. Jack Kingsman, and she may be confirmed.
Motion second to, uh, confirm Ms. McEnany, uh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Also, for the Retirees Health Benefits Committee, Mr. Mike Massey was nominated to succeed Mr. Lester Massey, and he may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Massey. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Next, we have Counsel appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. The Board of Water Commissioners, the seat of Rodney Close, he is not eligible to serve another term of office. This is Counsel's appointment, and we are accepting nominations. Did want to mention that there are no Senatorial District 15 representatives on this board. Next, for the Planning Advisory Commission, we have the seat of Mr. Wallace Davis. He is not eligible to serve another term of office. Mayor Protem Allen is nominating Sheila Brown for this seat, and we will bring that back for the next meeting for confirmation if there are no further nominees.
Mayor?
Counsel Huff?
Uh, that's left by, on the Board of Water Commissioners, could I appoint, uh, Reverend Ralph Hewling in the slot of Rodney Close?
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Huff will bring this back for the next meeting.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, ma'am. And we had a request to go, yep, both of them were on personnel. Yep, so we've had a request to go in executive session, I think you made a motion to that. All right, it's motion and second to go into executive session, discuss personnel issue. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we will reconvene in executive session. All right, we are, uh, we have returned from executive session. Uh, we had a, a couple of items to deal with. First, I'll call on the City Manager, uh, Ms. Isaiah Hughley.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, uh, this is to request, uh, that the, uh, HR Director and Planning Director, uh, receive a pay adjustment of one step in the existing pay grades with no budget impact, $2,358.71 each, uh, to bring their pay inland with other, uh, less tenured, uh, directors.
Is there a motion? Motion and second to approve, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That passes. All right, and the second item, I know the City Attorney had something. City?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll ask for a motion to substitute an oral resolution extending the Attorney's Fees List for Risk Management Services for FY '20 by 30 days.
I'll move, make that motion.
Motion and second to, uh, for, prove an oral resolution for extension of the list of attorneys. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That passes. We have one more item of business as well. I think Counsel Garrett had an additional nominee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd like to nominate Adrian Chester for the open spot on the Board of Water Commissioners.
Okay. We'll bring that back. All right, any further business needs to become before the Counsel? I entertain a motion to adjourn? Motion second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. All right, thank you all very much.